The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just for all.
Ask for traveling mercy for anyone as they go home and be with their families because they're ready for sports season at school and the kids that are studying, us to be with them and hear them peace with their children.
Yeah, present. The attorney Julie Lee and city attorney Sidney Dardell. Both here. Sub-graduate Darcy Vanerman. Everybody get a chance to previous meeting minutes.
Motion to approve, please.
Your plus in authority. The department currently has a couple of meetings over the last few months with the firing process and we've identified a candidate that we're really excited to offer a job to if we can get the blessings and approval of the cap for the Board of Works tonight. This is Colin Olsmeyer. He's a recent graduate of the Indiana Law enforcement academy. He graduated in 235th class. He's already been accepted by PR but it's just a matter of getting the approval tonight, signing off on a piece of paper tomorrow and to be able to begin his field training on Thursday. So I'm asking that to approve Colin. He was at the Frankfurt Police Department for nine months or so.
So right now I live in Noblesville.
Congratulations. The second thing I have on the agenda, Detective Anderson's been our detective for about the last year or so. Generally what we'll do with that is they'll start in as a detective detective sergeant after they've shown that they can do the job or move them up to the rank of a detective. So he's done excellent in that position. It's strictly a title change. It doesn't affect anything as far as salary or anything seniority in the department. He's permitted to do the job and I would recommend that be promoted to detective captain. The only, I guess asterisk next to that is it would still be in an acting position since I'm in an appointed position. If I were not in an appointed position, I could fall back to the rank of detective. That would be the only caveat, I guess. Thank you. Congratulations.
Could've missed that old piece of equipment out the street farm. It's been sitting there for forty years. They've got the highest. Well, some might actually be outgrew you, but we'll see.
Thank you, sir.
Question like, you're new guys. State law.
I thought you were actually applying to my last text to you, which was September twenty-second.
No, we campaigned like that next day.
Right, and that's what I found out. And I get it, but no, I'm teasing you back because you didn't answer me.
A weapon question. You don't want a nap in Jerry's sweat.
No, they don't make enough.
I was talking about the time that you.
Oh, no, I thought you was talking about.
Didn't listen to anything. I told him about it. I actually called. I just thought you said. We're doing that in the same building?
Yeah, upstairs office. Yeah, that was. Morning stuff there.
Certain ones.
Clients get delivered tomorrow. No, I've got. Okay.
And then when they don't last five years, then you gotta buy them.
That's. Looks like before.
Yes.
They look better. They look like same age.
Sorry, yes. Yeah, I do know.
And you got the secret ring though?
I'm gonna start on that. As soon as we get everything done. Everything moved down.
So you got that, okay.
That's on the nice.
Software here. Okay. Information that you might need to say. Yeah. Yeah.
You're seeing anybody.
I called for you too.
It's seeming more. This has been done how long this one little one sleeps? I contemplated it this morning. Going to network three seconds. About seven thirty.
Then at seven thirty, she was like eight quarter five. I didn't get her out till eleven and she was really awake from two thirty to five thirty. Like she was screaming something that didn't even register, like awake. It just, there's no activity from that. Because she was kicking them.
I know, so she.
Tears and spit up. Like she was like gasping. I don't like.
Soon we picked her up to throw up. You're good for your restaurant, six, eight, asleep, six, eight months.
At least they were the last ones, you know? She won't laugh unless she's home, so. She loves. She's just a photo baby.
When she get tired, she just take off the clothes to the house.
City council meeting for February third, twenty twenty-five. Score call, Roger Pino.
Present.
Don Virchell. Wendy Goins. Jeremy Vanerman.
Here.
Amy Berry. Dave Luck.
Here.
I Cooper.
Present.
City Attorney Julie and Sidney Dardell.
Here.
Sub-graduate Darcy Vanerman. Any thoughts unprepared?
I should have to.
Why?
Why? Because the city building has started to be there. Maybe she didn't want to hear me speak. That's probably what it was. No, that's okay.
Okay, we're ready to. For previous meeting minutes for over six. Previous meeting minutes.
Any changes? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All favor.
I approve.
All favor.
Things one nine three eight eight through one nine five four one, you know, the common two thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
I got something here. Um. One nine five two five, one nine five two six. Carpet kitchen cabinets to approve what building was that? Let me know when you're improving there.
The cabinets are down at the utility office and I would have to pull the carpet to verify where that one was. If that one was the fire department or where that was. I can pull that in the future tomorrow.
Are we, do we get bids for this stuff or do we just?
Being under five thousand, five thousand dollars. They can go get bids but they don't have to.
Eight under five thousand? That's a problem. I was just wondering.
I just had a quick question on one nine five oh one. It's actually on page seventeen and one nine five oh three. With the hail damage, did insurance pay that? I mean, like, can you help me with that?
Those three specific vehicles, they cut the check to us to then cut to outage whereas all the rest of the vehicles, they cut direct to outage auto body.
Okay, and then that came out of general?
Yes.
Why would that not come out? I mean, I'm just curious.
Because it was revenue insurance reimbursements are revenueed into the general, but.
Okay. That was just a matter of putting money in the general and then writing the check.
Yeah, they did some of the vehicles one way and some of the vehicles the other way.
We have deductibles on those or?
We only had to pay one deductible for all of those.
And I have just one more, just because I didn't understand that. It's probably a very simple answer. On page five at the bottom, nineteen four twenty-one, the bank fees. Celebrate account analysis.
Those are monthly bank fees.
So it's charged. Just help me with that. So is it like our fifteen dollar checking account type of fees?
Yep.
That don't have a certain amount or is it just, is that normal?
Yeah. Every month.
Are we still PNC? Yeah. I can mark, we switched. You have to swipe blood to write on the. Same page. Sorry, no website thing.
I guess the only question I have is especially with not knowing about the carpet, that two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollar expense and then the cabinets. So did those, those are dated ten seventeen and ten twenty-three. Mayor issued cease spending ten eight or nine for both days. So do those like fall within the parameters of? I spoke with the mayor about the cabinets. I don't, I can go pull, yep, I can step out of this meeting and go pull the carpet if you want me to. So we can figure out which apartment it went to. Well, I wanna, I mean, I guess, Mayor, do you know if that was like within your parameters of acceptable spending?
I just wish we would have held out until after you had been figured out. Has that work already been done?
What's the amount for the, so you said it's from Indiana Carpet One? Okay. The fire department had the bathrooms redone in July and it was around that dollar amount. I don't know if that's it, but. We, we don't have carpet. The last time the carpet was done at the fire department was in twenty sixteen, so we don't have carpet. The bathroom floors were redone in the summer and it was fifteen hundred dollars for one and fourteen something for the other one. So that would round up close to it, but I can't speak to that. If it says carpet, it's not the fire department.
I think as far as I'm concerned, those are the only two questionable items outside of the realm of.
Did we already have these items?
Yeah. Did you sign the claim?
I did not sign the claim. I don't remember a claim for the carpet, but I did not sign the claim to the cabinets.
My understanding, and I could be wrong, is that we budget certain amount. That's why I like the idea of budgeting amounts in the different categories. I think we kind of talked on that. If it's budgeted within the certain category and they have that monies, they can spend it how they need to within that by signing off on it. And then as far as council. Doesn't really micromanage. I mean, we look at it, don't take my words wrong, but as far as, as long as they have that money and they need that particular thing, it's when they don't have that money or they don't sign off on a claim. So the biggest, I think, thing now would need to be to know whether or not that was signed off. Because if the money is in the, in that particular account to spend for that and you've signed off on it, then it's, I don't know that we can override that. Am I correct?
Actually, I think we cannot.
Amy, I think that was your question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, sorry. So you're correct in that if there is an appropriation that has been made. So to their budgetary process or whatever, when there is an appropriation for funds in these that you're talking about, would be like the capital improvement type funds, right? So capital type projects, if there's money that has been appropriated in there and that the department has not overspent that appropriation, so there's still money remaining within that appropriation, then, you know, that it can be utilized to spend on those sorts of projects. So you just need to make sure that you guys appropriate money, that there's money remaining, and if there is, then it's you do your proper approvals of the, just the forms at that point. But it is the cash balance part, not the cash balance. If the appropriate, got that appropriation, then yeah, you just need to give.
Okay, thank you. And so the fund that that would be appropriated from.
That CCI is either forty-four oh one or forty-four oh two. I can't remember off the top of my head. One's capital cumulative capital improvement, one is cumulative capital development. And yes, we barely used those this year.
The fund group is black.
And appropriation lines as well.
And those are like the cat, it says on here, other than buildings, meaning like the outside of buildings. Is that what that means?
So some, there are multiple appropriation lines in both of those funds. Some of them are building specific and some of them are non-building specific.
And that can be used for any of the buildings that are in the city. That's correct. Get help questions.
The invoice for the fire department's bathroom floor was twenty-seven eighty-five oh six and it was approved on six twenty-seven. And I received the invoice. To me, whether it came to the city prior to, I can't answer that, but it was emailed to me with a question on nine two.
That appeared to be this one.
So not sure where she put carpet when it was green, but yes.
And it was approved, didn't you?
Yes. We'll make a motion to approve.
All favor.
Payroll for October third, one hundred forty thousand eight hundred two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Payroll, excuse me, payroll for October seventeenth, seven five, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, eleven dollars and one cents. Motion to approve.
Second.
October pension, nineteen thousand forty-five dollars and eighty-six.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.
Well, I think I brought up that I think with everything that we have, there's so much going on, we can go back to two meetings a month. Now, it's um, it's kind of confusing. Everything that's going on. We have a lot of, of things that we want to do and I just think it would be um. Better use of our time if we went to two meetings a month, by my opinion.
Invite that and then to council, like we had previously, not a council.
Two regular.
Yeah, however, we're going for that two regular council meetings, not a special session.
Starting, I mean. I mean, would you like that to start if you guys would like to do that?
I'm looking to that. Maybe January first is. If times have been, I don't know.
First meeting in January is January fifth. In favor. Make a motion, January fifth, we return to twice monthly meetings.
Sure that we advertise that instead of a working session, it will be a council meeting on that. I'm assuming it would be the third Monday then would also be a council.
Yes.
Is the border works also in the eight before us or that?
We'd have to bring it back before then.
Then I'd like to start at five thirty.
Start at six thirty. I thought longer I'd be.
Worried by you. Sister got a board of works. Before we can start home there. There will still be a board of work.
The first one.
The first one, but not second.
So five thirty, unless otherwise.
So need, so you have the board, you're on the board of works. Am I correct to say that?
Yes.
Okay, so you're usually here at five thirty. Am I correct to say that?
You're correct.
There we go.
Right, so the motion on the floor, starting January.
I know, is that gonna be confusing?
I will do my best to help.
I, I think. To let the public get off or have a chance to hear. So I hear six o'clock.
I think for continuity, five forty-five.
Uh, I just keep everything the same if we're gonna do it.
I agree. They're look. It's not six, it's not five thirty.
I'll second the motion on the floor.
All favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you guys. Do we, do we want to have a special meeting in two weeks to? Vote on.
Well, for discussion, yes.
I think it's gonna be a working.
You're gonna have to go through the entire process of doing.
Publicity.
You have to go advertise, you have to do a public hearing, all that process. So there won't be a vote. It'll be farther down the road, probably the, as you could. The, the earliest is probably in December. Like towards the end of December, that will be happening.
So, so I understand, in two weeks, it will be a working session with discussion. Okay. Working session with discussion. Okay, so not a special session, like on your mission, no.
No action.
Right, no action.
Down here instead of special. On the set of tea.
Um. Actually, can we hold that? Open for a second. We received a request from the fire chief, I believe, that. Special meeting on that day. Is that board of works or council? Just board works, okay. Some board of works will need to have an actual meeting, I think, for something that we, we can discuss that. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't understand. Sorry.
We, we can call a, a special board of works meeting at any time, as long as you, as long as we have forty-eight hours. So.
Sorry. I got that too.
That's what I was going.
Sitting on two boards, it kind of got it confused, but I want to make sure we're good.
From a special session to a working session, does anybody want to entertain motion? Just for clarity, we're open door.
That's separate.
Okay. Yeah, and so the working is um no action, they can just discuss it. I would make that motion to change from the special session to a working session. And then the rest of the team at five thirty here at the hall. I'll say.
Sorry, I thought the other one was board of. There's a house over here on um. Straight down the road. I don't have the address, I'll come back to it, but I'm gonna see our status on that one as far as it being demoted or taken down. It's been empty and hollow and fallen every year.
On John Street.
Yeah, sorry, block over on John. Yeah, over by Mike or.
The White House.
Tom's house, um Scott's. Next door. Is that one been on your list for a while? I thought, okay. I thought it was the.
The taxes are paid up on it is on the last.
They are.
The last word I've gotten ever I've asked about it, they just say the taxes.
That's.
We don't know. Much more than that.
I'd like to say the, the monster bathroom, you know, great, had a lot of attendant, more than I've ever seen. I would say it was close to three thousand feet. And then Halloween went. Awesome. We had participation from the police department, the fire department. Nice. So thank you guys. Welcome.
Mayor, one more thing, what all the department heads are here. I, I don't even know, I didn't realize there was an email that went out to the department heads. So I had went to the mayor and asked for, in the future, especially with communication regarding your departmental budgets. If he would include you in our council meeting so that you can hear some of the communication that happens revolving around your department specifically. I also ask that you be provided with a working document for your budgets so that you understand what you have at the beginning of the year, what you have to work with going on throughout the year. But I thought it would be a good opportunity for you to be here. Um, I think a lot of the information is missed when, when you're not present, at least some of the time. But then I, I'll leave it up to the mayor's discretion, uh, what kind of communication or what that um. Kind of calendar looks like as far as you providing information to us. I know in the past periodically you would come in with departmental updates. Um, I know Mark would speak to, you know, testing and things like that and Mark Sayer would talk about um. Data provided from the street sweeper that was like, wow, who would know, you know, what kind of help that does for the city and even economically. So that's always appreciated. So I thought we would just take that opportunity to open back up those communication lines. Um, so I apologize, I didn't know that that information was going out now, so thank you for being here today. And then we'll kind of talk about what that looks like going forward, but thank you for being here.
Accepting my. So move.
Second. Mayor, what's this? Carpet and the cabinets?
Yeah, you too. Congratulations.
So thank you, thank you, Brittany.
Yeah, Kevin said.